I call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Do we have a roll call, please, Des?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Present.
Mayor Potem Chatterley?
Present.
Commissioner Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Here. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you all for turning out tonight. Couple of announcements. We have our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 24th here in the chambers, 6:00 PM. Mr. Mestes, would you like to introduce our new employee, or do we have one?
Our new employee unfortunately is sick, so we'll do the introduction next meeting.
Okay. This time we have a proclamation. Proclamation. National Suicide Awareness Month, September 2024. Whereas suicide is a public health crisis impacting people of all ages across all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds, with 469 reported suicides of ages 10 and older in the state of New Mexico in 2023. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death among teens and young adults 15 to 24, and the second leading cause of death among children ages 10 to 14, and individuals between the ages of 25 to 34. And whereas public awareness of the warning signs and support networks, including the three-digit 999 number for the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline available through call or text to everyone, is essential to continue lowering the rates of suicide. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention and RAIN are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through prayer, support, research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or who struggle. And whereas RAIN is also working to educate people about how substance use treatment and mental health services can enable those with a mental and/or substance use disorder to live a healthy and rewarding life. And whereas RAIN is sponsoring a recovery and remembrance event on September 21st to honor and remember those who have been lost to suicide, violence, or drug overdose, and to honor and support those in recovery, and to encourage others to start on a path to sobriety. Now therefore do I, James Neil Segada Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, on behalf of the City of Raton, hereby proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Awareness Month. In witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be fixed this 10th day of September 2024.
We've got a crew here, all right.
Good, good. Come on.
Come on.
Let's all get in here.
We also have one of these for each of you. Okay, try to pass them along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to get to join us that morning?
Put it on the calendar.
All right. Or after this. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's your mind.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We love the T-shirt for you, Ms. Desiree, for all your help and organization of that. We really appreciate it.
Have joy.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
We hear you, Jac. Hey, Jac.
Yeah.
We hear you.
Okay.
Okay. We just did the proclamation. All right. So, can we show on the minutes that 6:04 Commissioner Jacamo joined via the telephone? Item five. At this time, we'll take items from citizens present. And ask you to limit your comments as briefly as you can, please. And if you are addressing something that is on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. And please state your name and your association.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Alicia Grubelik, and I am with the Raton Business Task Force Committee. My husband Brad and I are native Ratonians, with both of our families having a long history with the City of Raton and Colfax County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my family, the Business Task Force Committee, and my business colleagues for a safe community. A brief timeline. 11 months ago, I helped organize a luncheon for the South Raton Business District to discuss the increased crime and break-ins. There was a remarkable turnout of over 100 citizens, which included business owners and employees. The newly hired city manager, Rick Mestes, attended. Due to a large number of business break-ins and robberies, the volunteer group formed a grassroots committee to the Business Task Force Committee and asked the city manager to join to focus, propose solutions for the city's crime issues. Ratonians care and want a safer community. In December 2023, the city manager reported the city was hiring, had hired additional police officers for additional patrols, and the city had also purchased camera systems. Our focus shifted to a cleanup for our main street and highway intersections. You have heard from Warren Walton and Kathleen Hansen in previous commission meetings about the success of the Talking Trash program that was primarily driven, completed by volunteers, and yes, we are anxious to hear how and when the city will continue the hard work of so many dedicated volunteers. Ratonians care and want a safer community. I am at this microphone this evening to ask each of you, as a city commissioner, when will safety in our community be a priority for the city's operations? Our group of volunteers has demonstrated for the last year a commitment to reduce Raton's crime. Ratonians care and want a safer community. Respectfully, I understand that a commissioner's role and job is time-demanding for the city's operations and governance. Thank you for your dedication. However, I cannot locate on any agenda nor meeting minutes the topic of safe community nor reduce the city crime. Ratonians care and want a safer community. Where is this priority? I have passed out a list of recent crimes. This list was not generated by the Raton Police Department. It was generated by collecting information from local Ratonians and the Facebook group we established last year for businesses. Currently, the Raton Police Department does not provide any information to citizens regarding recent crimes nor attempted crimes, which would help every citizen and business. For example, the Raton Police Department postings in August reported driving violations, municipal and district court bench warrants, and the telecommunications job opening. Regarding this list of crimes, the Business Task Force Committee, businesses, and residents have these main questions. Why can we not learn within 24 hours about attempted burglaries, burglaries, and other offenses? This information would help all Ratonians. Many communities maintain a crime map online for current offenses. When will the goal for a safe community, reduce crime, be a priority for the commission? When will the commission define and outline steps to reduce crime? You see many volunteers present tonight. Many are unable to attend. City commissioners, we are a group of passionate, hardworking, talented, and committed Ratonians for a safe community. When will the commission's priorities for Raton align with its citizens? You have an army of volunteers ready and able to work to build a safer community. When will this group be recognized for its passion to build a safer community? Other communities have volunteer groups working with the community police departments to lower crime. Our communities also have online map, our other communities also have online map tools that identify crime areas. Do we need additional budget in the police department? Do we need updated ordinances to protect the citizenry from crime, burglaries, and vagrants? We have already demonstrated our passion and that we are ready to roll up our sleeves. We are ready for improved communication from the police department. We are ready for additional neighborhood patrols. We are ready to support updated and new ordinances. Will you join us to build a safer community? Our calendar is open for a meeting. We would love to have Raton a safer community. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just state that we all want a safe community in Raton.
We do.
And we are not all sitting on our hands. Can I ask, have you attempted to have a meeting with either the chief of police or the sheriff?
Our department, or our task force, has met with the sheriff's department in the past. We've met with the city manager numerous times, and the city police also came to some of our meetings. So we just want, we want more communication with the police department. We want the police department to communicate with not just our committee, but with all of the citizens of Raton, the recent crime that's going on. As you guys could see, we almost have two-page, and those are just the ones we know of, of recent crime in Raton.
And I'll just make one other statement. Once a crime's committed, that crime is then under investigation, and it's very limited information that can be put out. But I would encourage you to continue to work with the police force and the sheriff. We will continue to do the same. But let me make it clear, we all want a safe Raton, and we're not turning a blind eye on anything.
Okay. And we would love, I mean, just like the sheriff's department on the shootout, they put information out right away, and people were aware of what was going on, and then we kind of knew what was going on, but we don't feel like we get that completely all the way around. And that's what we're asking for. And our committee is willing to help do anything we can on our side, help get information out. We've been sharing posts of a stolen vehicle that was missing last week. We share those posts, and we try to get them out so everybody is aware of it, and everybody's on the lookout. That's what we want.
We'll continue to work. There are a lot of officials in that.
I'm pretty sure what we don't have on staff is a social media expert, and that's what it would take to get all the kind of posts that you're talking about. And I think, you know, I think there's an attempt made, but I don't think we have that staff person at this time, and nor is that in the budget. However, like the mayor said, we care and we will continue to work toward a safer community.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
That you two are working together with Crime Stoppers. They're a powerful, can be a powerful group. They're low in numbers right now, so if you join forces, we appreciate community involvement a great deal.
Thank you. We have been, Warren's been with Crime Stoppers, so we will start attending their meetings as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address us at this time? You were supposed to leave him alone. She tried. She tried.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and everybody else here. I'm Ron Schuster. I'm here to represent Crime Stoppers. The Crime Stoppers began in Albuquerque, as a lot of you know, back in July of 1976. We started our little group here in 2017, I believe it was. And with, the way we operate is we ask the public to call in tips. They can do it by either going online to the website for the tip website, or call 575-245-TIPS, which is 8477. All tips are anonymous when they're called in. The tip line is answered 24/7 by an answering service which specializes in Crime Stoppers programs. These phone systems do not provide, do not have any ID caller identification, and they do not record any of the calls that come in. We provide cash rewards for anonymous information resulting in arrest, recovery of stolen property, and/or confiscation of illegal drugs. Raton Crime Stoppers will not pay rewards for information provided through any service other than our online tip line and also the website. So far, we've paid anywhere tips ranging from $50 to $1,000. And again, Crime Stoppers number is 575-245-8477. And we just need the citizens to start phoning in tips. As Alicia was saying, you know, there's been quite a few things going on, and Crime Stoppers was started here in Raton because of broken windows, slashed tires, and stuff like that back in 2017. So we're just trying to get people involved again. Maybe they've forgotten about the tip line, and they can make some money. I mean, it's, $50 is pretty nice. I know, it'd fill anybody's pocket today. And the whole thing is, you know, the way to do away with crime is to shine a spotlight on everything. And if people, you know, there's always somebody out there that sees something that goes on, and if they'll just call in and give a tip, we get it to the local police, the sheriff's department, the state police work with us. So everybody has a finger in this, and they're all trying to help one another, but it doesn't do any good if you don't have any tips, and the best tips come from the citizens that might see something or hear something. So we're just hoping people will remember about Crime Stoppers and start using our tip line again. Also, as you can see, my T-shirt this weekend has the motocross, so I hope people will remember that and show up to you.
Cool. Thanks, sir.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into the business items. Item six, aid deliberate an act on approval of August 27, 2024, regular meeting minutes and the September 3, 2024, special meeting planning session minutes. If there are no corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes, they would stand approved as presented. Seeing none, minutes stand approved. Item B, deliberate an act on event forum for the Raton Public Schools Homecoming Parade, October 11th. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, Raton High School will be celebrating its homecoming day on October 11, 2024, with the parade starting at BTU Block and Concrete Incorporated at the corner of First and Cimarron Avenue here in Raton and proceeding north along First Street towards Ripley Park. First Street will be closed from 11:00 AM to 2:30. Inside your packet is a certificate of liability insurance, a copy of the parade route, and application form signed by the Public Works Director, city clerk, and myself. The city recommends that you act on this in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Everything looks in order. And it's a great event, so I will move to approve.
Motion and second to adopt. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote positive.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, introduction of ordinance for the de-annexation to the City of Raton, New Mexico, of contiguous territory of 132.6 acres located in the vicinity of the I-25-450 interchange. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, on January 23, 2024, the City of Raton passed a resolution declaring surplus property and approving the government-to-government transfer of 132.6 acres of land to the Picarus Pueblo. On that date, the city commission expressed its desire to support this project that is located just east and slightly north of the I-25 and 450 interchange. The Indian Gaming Compact between the State of New Mexico and the Indian tribes in the Pueblo stipulate that any land held in trust by the United States for the exclusive benefit of the tribe cannot be located within the city limits. By de-anexing 376.7 acres of contiguous property, this would allow alignment of the above-stated 132.6 acres outside of municipal boundaries. I wish to be clear that the 132.6 acres the city has set aside for the government-to-government transfer has not changed, and the remaining 244.1 acres remain a city property. I would also emphasize that the ordinance shall not be in effect until final action as approved above said forth, and the filing of said ordinance in the ordinance book as provided by law shall thereafter be accomplished. A copy of the ordinance shall thereafter be filled together with a copy of the plat with the clerk of Colfax County, New Mexico. The city recommends that this ordinance be introduced.
As Mr. Mestes says, this is the introduction of the ordinance to de-annex said properties. This time, is there any discussion among the commission?
I just would like to make sure that we clarify that that property has not yet been transferred, that that is the intention, but it has not yet been executed.
And this is to avoid a situation where, you know, we have like Vatican City inside the center of Rome. You know, this is so, this lies outside of the city limits.
I did have a phone conversation today. If we de-annex this, does it or could it fall upon the county to create any jurisdiction over this?
It's city property. It remains city property.
Well, by de-annexing this, it's being outside the city limit.
Right.
So somebody from the county raised the question, if that be the case, then does this situation fall within the guise of the county for whatever reason?
Wouldn't it become part of the ETZ, I mean, area right around the city?
Because it's still in our, yeah, it's still city property. I mean, the City of Raton isn't within Colfax County, so I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I thought it was a vague question, but I'm just bringing it up. It was asked.
Well, typically, anything in the ETZ, which is a certain boundary around the city, in my understanding, is a, there is a specific board between the city and the county for anything, any concerns about that type of property that's within close proximity of the city limits.
Well, I think that's why it was asked, was, because if we push back off of it, then does it fall under the jurisdiction of the county, or do they have to also?
No, this is, this is their city property.
Well.
We're not, we're not going to be asking the county to do anything for this property.
Okay, well, but I, like I said, for whatever reason, they felt like, okay, then we have a finger in how it's zoned, and it's like, I don't think it's your function, but.
Doesn't change anything.
You want to answer that, Mr. Berry? Commissioner Honeyfield, Mayor, Commissioners, Scott Berry, I'm standing up as the retired city manager that had talked about this project some years back, and I have been involved, been appointed by the mayor to really act, liaise to Picarus Pueblo in this matter. Commissioner Honeyfield, as I understand the question, there could be a question about zoning, and as we know, in that area immediately outside of the municipal boundaries, there's an extraterritorial zoning commission, which is equally represented by the City of Raton and the county, and that's because we would anticipate that the extraterritorial zone would develop on municipal utilities and be annexed at some point in the future. That's a normal occurrence everywhere else. So the city has an equal say-so in that, in zoning. Now, as far as subdivision regulations, yes, the county rule on dividing land would apply in that case. And I would say that that would start out again at Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. The county has a little bit different process for dividing land, and that would probably come into, into question at some point. Those are the two things I think would apply here from county oversight.
Well, when the question was asked to me, it was beyond my wheelhouse, and I'd served on that territorial board, but it's like, I, that was my pay grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Would entertain a motion to introduce.
I'll move to introduce ordinance for the de-annexation to the City of Raton, New Mexico, of contiguous territory, 132.6 acres, which is actually a total of 376.7 acres, located.
That would be the correction. So since it was on the agenda as that, we would want it to be the approval of the full amount of the acreage.
Yes. For the 376.7 acres located in the vicinity of the I-25-450 interchange. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Introduction. Thank you. Item D, public hearing deliberate an act on ordinance number 1027, repealing City of Raton Code Section 33.28 of the Code of the City of Raton, being ordinance number 1010, dated December 8, 2020, City of Raton Labor Management Relations Ordinance. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the City of Raton adopted ordinance 1010 cited as the City of Raton Labor Management Relations Ordinance in December 2020. The purpose of this ordinance was to guarantee city employees the right to organize and bargain collectively. On July 8, 2021, Thomas J. Criego, the Executive Director of the State of New Mexico Public Employee Labor Relations Board, notified the City of Raton that the board did not meet specific requirement laid out by the State of Mexico and ceased to exist. This ordinance requires the repeal of the above-stated ordinance and requires referral of all future matters to the State Public Employee Labor Relations Board. This ordinance was introduced on July 9, 2024, and today we are adopting the Raton Code Section 33.28 of the Code of the City of Raton, being ordinance number 1010, dated December 8, 2020, City of Raton Labor Management Relations Ordinance be repealed in its entirety. The city recommends that this ordinance be passed, approved, and adopted.
Okay. And I would just like to reiterate and state this particular, what we're repealing now is in reference to organized personnel.
Collective bargaining.
Yes. And it does not affect our personnel board, our local personnel board. Any other questions, comments?
I will move to approve ordinance number 1027, repealing City of Raton Code Section 33.28 of the Code of the City of Raton, being ordinance number 1010, dated December 8, 2020, City of Raton Labor Management Relations Ordinance.
A second, but just point of order if we need to have the public hearing mentioned.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to address this ordinance at this time, you may do so. We've had this on here a couple of times already. All righty, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Again, Des, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Item Bases, thank you. Item E, Deliberate an Act on TKE Modernization Proposal for Convention Center Elevator, utilizing State Price Agreement Number 200000022-00064. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor Commission, at the last regular meeting on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the commission deliberated and acted on the destination for grant agreement between the State of New Mexico Tourism Department and the City of Raton for the elevator at the Raton Convention Center. This agreement is between New Mexico Tourism Department and our city to provide assistance in the form of matching funds up to one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents for eligible expenses towards the creation of the Raton Convention Center Elevator Modernization Project. Since then, we have obtained a TKE Modernization Proposal for the Convention Center Elevator using the state price agreement stated above in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents. This proposal consists of a modernization package engineered to increase durability and reliability, improve fire and safety features, decrease waiting times, reduce energy consumption, reduce operational costs, reduce troubleshooting time, and will include the elevator mechanical and electrical components being replaced, refurbished, or retained. The city recommends that you act in affirmative on the section.
All right, any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Mestes. It's, you remarked that it's in the New Mexico Tourism Department to provide assistance in the form of matching funds. Do, what is our, is there a match on this, or is this just pure grant funds?
This is pure grant funds. This is, there is a match if we go beyond.
If we go beyond it. Okay, thank you.
Again, just for clerical reasons, you said thirty-six cents. It says thirty-five cents on here. I know how picky DFA can be. I know it's only a penny.
This is thirty-five cents. I'm sorry, I apologize. That's my typo.
Okay, so it is thirty-five cents.
Yes, correct.
Now, you're being a penny, didn't you?
You're correct, you copy.
But I don't want it kicked back because we got the wrong amount there.
I figure if I collect enough those pennies over time.
I got a draw.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the TKE Modernization Proposal for the Convention Center Elevator, utilizing State Price Agreement Number 200000022-00064. One second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote that sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Deliberate an Act on Appeal of Resolution 2024-42 Concerning a Dangerous Building or Premises and Requiring Removal, 120 South First Street. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor Commission, as you recall, on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, this resolution was brought forth. Block Eight Properties Limited Liability Corporation, fifty-two oh-three Wantabo Boulevard, Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico, owns or is in possession of the property described as lots six and seven, eight and nine, and the north five feet and ten inches of block five in block eight of the original townsite of Raton, now City of Raton, Colfax County, New Mexico. This is, property is also known as 120 South First Street. After the brick wall of the building collapsed, Code Enforcement Officer George Riley opened case sixteen sixty-three against the property and sent a first notice of violation to owner Wayne McMurtry, identifying the property located on 120 South First Street as a dangerous building, and then responded again, Mr. McMurtry, excuse me, Mr. McMurtry responded in writing dated six-three, two thousand and twenty-three, requesting a ninety-two, one hundred and twenty day extension of the violation identified as a first notice violation. We have had an open line of communication with the city and the owners. The city sent a copy of the dangerous building to the owners, and I would like to call forward the representative of Block Eight Properties Limited Liability Corporation to discuss their appeal of Revolution, of Resolution 2024-42 concerning the dangerous building. They're on one.
It should be on conference call line, yes.
Good evening, are you there?
Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
Go ahead, dear.
You should have, you should have everything in front of you with regards to the appeal as well as the project plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you have any questions for us based on that?
It's pretty cut and dried. To me, it looks like you're going to be demolishing the building.
Yes, based on several conversations with the engineer, it will be best, we would have loved to save the facade for the sake of the community, but it looks like the best thing will be to demolish, completely demo the building. There are, there are some phases that are built in there.
Right.
Which will help to determine if saving the facade will be possible, rather than just go pull everything down from the front all the way to the back. It can't be, cannot be done that way anyhow, and so the benefit is that we get to go into it by phase, starting from the back, and by the time we get to phase three, that will determine whether or not the facade can be saved or not. And by, by that time, it would have been a very fair evaluation of the facade.
Sure, no, we appreciate that. Want to turn it over to any of my other commissioners here for questions, comments?
Can I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, for the environmental phases, it looks like I didn't see a timeline delineation on there. Do you have an estimate in how long those two phases might take?
So, we purposely did not put a timeline on the environmental, because we believe that the environmental is the least of the time needed, because environmental can probably start with, at the same time, at phase one of the project phase. We've had some conversations, one of the environmental companies that we've been referred to was by the City of Raton and has done some work for the City of Raton, so in talking with them, we're fairly confident in them getting to things at probably parallel to phase one of the project. If there, if that's going to go into any other extended time, we will, of course, communicate that, but we assume that it can be parallel with phase one, project phase one next.
Okay, so it looks like you're looking at a timeline, if we go the longest amount of one hundred and forty days, which is approximately four and a half to five months?
So, four and a half to five months, that comes about right, and I, if that's what has said about, I'm going to back up to what the demo company has said, so we are approaching October, November, December, January, February, so yes, that, that sounds like a good summary of the numbers.
And just to clarify, your biggest concern is that the original resolution requires removal or repair within sixty days, and so are you mostly concerned about the timeline?
Yeah, we are not, this appeal is not based on any disagreement in that it is a dangerous building, and in how you have all deemed it a dangerous building, there's no dispute on that. It, yeah, these are, we're just looking and having conversations with the demo company. It, these are state-required steps that have to be taken, and so that is what that high-level plan that you have is basing upon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Jayden, you've been working pretty much hand-in-hand with these folks. You good with the estimates and all that?
That's correct. Yeah, I think it's reasonable what they're asking for.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Would entertain a motion?
Are there any concerns that you have with regards to, for us? Obviously, there's going to be some time by, before we get to actually bringing in equipment to do any of that, but do you have any questions for us with regards between, clearly, there has to be the engineering plan and approval that has to occur in that phase one of project, which is what we, which is where we believe environmental will run parallel with that, but do you have any concerns for after that with regards to equipment coming into the back alley and, you know, having that shoring be put up?
No, at this time, I think if we work in coordination with Jayden, our city engineer and that, I feel confident that he could assist and keep us informed, but the, our main concern is it's a dangerous building, and we need to remediate it as quickly as possible, but as safely as possible as well.
Yes, that is precisely it, and for us, safety is number one. You know, our engineer reminds us every day that safety is the key, and when we chose the demo company, we, because we understand that safety is key, is that we chose the demo company based on our engineer being in agreement with the demo company and that the demo company was in sync with our engineer on safety.
Very good.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Instead of repealing the resolution, because we all agree that it's a dangerous building, perhaps we could consider amending the resolution and just changing the sixty days to by March first, two thousand and twenty-five? So, I hate, I mean, you know it's a dangerous building. That's just my thought. If the timeline is the biggest issue.
If it's just the timeline, I don't think there's an issue with just amending the resolution. That'd probably be the cleanest way. Because if I'm, if we repeal the resolution, we would have to come back with another resolution with the extended timeframe. So, I would not be opposed to just amending the existing resolution. Is that, how would you interpret that, Mr. Mestes?
Mr. Mayor, I guess there's a few questions I guess I have. If you guys look at that insurance binder, most of these, it's pretty typical that the property address is given. There isn't one on this. So, we don't know if Block Eight Properties LLC, what they have exactly insured here, because there is no address given. I guess my other concern is, they run the risk of that building pressurizing and blowing the windows out of it, because through the winter, we're going to have blizzards, and with the amount of roofing and walls that have collapsed in this thing, pedestrians walking by could be subject to any of those kind of hazards. I just feel real uncomfortable leaving that sidewalk open to the public with that building being in the condition of thin and no shoring whatsoever has been done since they've owned it. I don't know. I'm not in agreement on giving them an extended timeframe. Ma'am, can you tell me why there is no address on this insurance binder?
We're not sure why, but you're welcome to call the company to verify the insurance. Our insurance is definitely valid, and it's the only type of insurance we are able to get on that property.
Mr. Mestes?
But we can certainly call our agent tomorrow, yeah, and get that certified, but I believe that the reason that you may not be seeing an address is because it's going against block eight, and block eight is that address.
It does have an address, 120 South First Street, in the kind of purple area at the very bottom, underneath the dark blue.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, there is.
But, Mr. Mestes, would you call on this and check the validity of it, to be sure it is in place?
That is small, probably.
It is very small. Is the sidewalk something that can be closed with your concern by the city, or to protect that perhaps, Jayden? I don't know.
We can close that, yeah.
I think that would fall under the city, yeah.
Public works.
To make sure that that area remains safe.
I'd feel more comfortable about it. I don't know why the property owner hasn't insisted on it. With, in the condition that building's in, it's, especially knowing that we're coming into the winter season, it, there's a lot of different possibilities that could happen.
Sure, and we just had an event down there, and a good friend of mine was sat right in front of that, where there, where there's tent and all of that.
Right.
And I brought that up, but, you know, I think it probably would be wise of the city to cover our bases and close that area off. We do have the homecoming parade coming up, so could present an issue.
Okay, well, Jason, first.
But, well, I think we could come up with some kind of thing that'll work for everybody.
Yeah, and it looks like in terms of their phasing, phase one is their shoring plan, so hopefully that will happen quickly.
Yeah. It's thirty to forty days, so we'll see.
So...
Any other questions?
I will make a motion.
The shoring, the shoring will be on the south side of the building, just to, to the point that you just brought up for clarification.
So, the south side, they'd be protecting the heirloom shop, but I don't know how they would shore it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's up against another building, the south side.
Right.
Can you comment on that?
I am not sure what the structural engineer's plan is as far as shoring that up. I think that is the goal, though, to do whatever they need to do to protect the surrounding buildings from damage.
So, Jayden is correct. It's based on our conversations with the engineer, and I have one of our other managing partners with here, and can you comment on the technicalities of that?
Yeah, the basis as described include the development of a shoring plan for your approval. Yeah, the phases described, uh, include the development of a shoring plan for your approval.
Okay. Is there any talk to, like, shoring up the facade to prevent that from falling into the street or?
Uh, that is part of the development of the shoring plan.
Okay.
But it's, but it's within one of the later phases.
Yeah.
Phase one is to come in from the back. And that, that is something that once the engineer does that, that we can present to, um, Mr. Welch, uh, for him to review with the engineer.
Okay.
So based on this addendum, I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 202442 concerning a dangerous building or premises and require removal, 120 South First Street. With the, um, instead of the removal or repair hereby ordered within 60 days, we will say by March 1st, 2025.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the Resolution 24, 2024 dash 42 to state that the completion will be done by March 1st, 2025. Any other discussion?
I, I just believe, uh, just, my thoughts are that they are working with Jayden. They've got engineers and working on this. I think they've initiated the process and so I believe that they've got expertise on board to work toward getting it safe, safely completed.
Let's still look at blocking that area off.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
No.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution Number 2024 dash 50, Application to National Telecommunications and Information Administration Digital Equity Grant. Mr. Messis?
Mayor and Commission, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration is an executive branch agency that is principally responsible for advising the President of the United States on tele- telecommunications and information policy. These programs focus largely on expanding broadband and ensuring the internet remains an engine for continued innovation and economic growth. This grant will allow the Carney Film and Media Training Center to partner with the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library, the Center for, Center for Community Innovation to address construction and completion projects at Carney School. The city will partner with Chicanos Por La Causa, a nonprofit inspired by Colfax County native Dolores Huerta and a sub awardee. The city is requesting $4,075,091 in grant funding with a match of $600,000 in existing unencumbered funds from the capital outlay funding already dedicated to the training center. The funding will allow the completion of 5,000 square feet that is yet to be programmed into the current cost. Uh, Mayor and Commission, we, um, um, request that you approve this in the affirmative.
So I've got a few questions myself here. So we're requesting a grant for just north of $4 million.
Correct.
Our match would be $600,000 from the existing money that we got for capital outlay.
Correct, because they're separate funds. This is federal funds and the other one's state funds, so.
If we don't get the $4 million, I'm assuming our match is reduced.
If they re, if they, um.
Is there, I mean, is there a chance to get, is it all or nothing? Or is there a chance to get?
I'd like to call forward Ann Tice to.
Hi, Ann Tice, Better City and Albertone Media Works. Um, so, yeah, this, preferably, we would have come forward at the next meeting, but the grant is actually due September 23rd. Um, and so it's, we're kind of finalizing all the details. The Chicanos Por La Causa will be the final, they'll be the lead applicant. Um, the city of Raton will be a sub, uh, awardee. And so those, yeah, those details haven't been, you know, we haven't quite gotten to the point where we negotiated the final, final amount. Um, and so that's why we sort of worded it that it would be 20% up to whatever amount um, we actually got in the grant. So like if that amount came down to 3 million or 2 million, that the 20% would still then match whatever the total award would be for the city's portion of the grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes.
And we are using, just to be clear, we're kind of also using, and we, uh, we did this in the very first EDA grant that we applied for that we didn't get, um, way back in like 2022, is that we're gonna use some of that, that un, the unconstructed, unrenovated space also as a match so that essentially like the library, you know, that we have a community, um, computer center, a Makerspace, office for, uh, you know, people. And that's sort of like part of the free rent or whatever, like the offered rent for that program to have this tech hub.
And then, uh, I guess another question, would the nonprofit be getting administrative fees for this?
The, well, yeah, the, in the budget, it's basically, there would be, um, some utilities. So one, we want to try to get, if we can get 10 gig, uh, internet paid for through this grant so that we could support all the things that, all the media training that we're gonna do in Albertone Media Works, the Makerspace, the Computer Lab. We also wanna, um, open up the nurses station that we have there for the film school um, to be able to be an open telehealth center. That could be a private telehealth, um, like office that someone could rent, um, if they can't make it to the doctor. Um, so we would have that. And then there would be, um, yeah, some program management, technical management. Um, and then there would also be, I put in the grant, two digital navigators as well. Um, that, those would be, I asked for full funding for those and those would be the people that would actually kind of work under us, but kind of through all the other, you know, through the center and through the library to do the digital equity training, to do outreach, to go to like the senior center, to go to the schools and get young people in. And while anybody of all ages, obviously, young people to the elderly.
I think, I was curious about your question though. Is, would the grant be administered by the city? And are there admin, is there a percentage of admin fees from the overall award?
Yeah, they can, they allow up to 10% for administrative fees. And the city would be managing it because unfortunately, Albertone Media Works doesn't have enough, you know, startup time yet to actually be considered for a large federal grant like this. But we would, you know, can come in as a contractor to help do anything that needs to get done.
One more question I'm gonna make. Um, it mentions in item three on the second page, uh, well, there, there's a little typo there. It's like, it just says contingent upon the ward, and I think that just means award. Um, but it, right before that, it talks about the XR Studio Project. Item three on the now, therefore be it resolved.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Um, so the XR Studio Project, is, is that built into this as well? Or starting it or in what, is that location in the gym?
Yeah, well, this, yeah, 'cause, I mean, right now, there's like about 75-ish percent of the, I mean, as we have planned right now, um, that the architects have told us, about 75% of the building will be able to be renovated um, as well as the, basically the structure of the other 25%, like this 25%. However, it's not gonna be like livable. It won't have, you know, like the, where the walls are separating, the drywall won't be fixed. The floor won't be, you know, um, fully fixed. There won't be carpeting, paint. You know, there won't be all the niceties. It won't be like livable. Um, also, the bathrooms won't be renovated, which is one of the things that'll be needed for a certificate of occupancy to occupy the remaining space as well. So there's gonna be like a door in the hallway, like going north, um, to that wing right now. That's just gonna be essentially closed off. That will be unused. So this would hopefully allow us to open up that door, right? And so everything else for the film school will be on the south side of, like the middle part and the south side of the building. So the gym will be renovated, all those classrooms, offices, training spaces. Those, the plan is that there will be, you know, under, once we go out to bid, we'll get the final numbers from the contractors, but that's the plan. And Jayden, if I said anything incorrectly about that.
In item three, when you say XR Studio Project, you're just saying that's part of the whole name of the whole project. That wasn't a piece of this grant.
Yeah, that's the capital outlay funding that was already dedicated to that project. You know, which again, the intent was originally that the whole building would be renovated for that, but now that's not happening. But this is, you know, the benefit of that, it's allowing us to really create some partnerships and go after additional funding and, um, actually, Zia Youth and, um, Danny from the library and I just met. Uh, Patricia couldn't make it today, but we're actually gonna be starting monthly collaboration meetings to really try to work together on the kind of avenues that we all, you know, reach out to the community for training and education. So, so, yeah, it's exciting to, to start that piece of it and really get into the collaboration.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that we're looking for other sources.
Yeah. This, yeah, this is a, really a once in a lifetime opportunity. There, this money is just an influx of money that came because of the pandemic. Um, and it likely won't happen again. There will be some state funds available later on, but the total amount is less than $8 million that the state of New Mexico got. So they're, they'll probably be giving very small awards, which we can, you know, also go after those.
Sure.
They'll be much, they won't do construction, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Ann or anybody?
One more, one more thing, if you, if you don't mind.
I can sit here if you need.
Oh, yes.
One more thing. I, I just want to extend condolences from the commission on the last year.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, I have a question for Michael Ann.
Mike Lan?
How much extra burden does this create for you? Or do you feel comfortable with one more grant?
I think I echo Ann's sentiments. This is once in a lifetime funding and I wouldn't, uh, recommend that the city not approve, um, something of this magnitude. Um, I think sometimes some of the littler grants that we go after are just as burdensome as the $4 million grant. So certainly, um, I think if we were awarded something this large, um, we would probably seek to even hire additional staff or train other staff in-house to assist with the grant management of it.
And that was my question about the admin fees. Possibly could bring someone on to assist with that, Commissioner.
Cause how much payroll is involved with this? Or if you had a chance to?
I think until we actually got a grant agreement, I don't know that we would know the exact stipulations or requirements of the grant. So it would be a little premature for us to speculate at this point. So.
Potential 10%.
Yeah.
Potentially. Any other questions, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 202450, Application National Telecommunications and Information Administration Digital Equity Grant.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 202450. Any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on recommendation of bid award for the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Paint and Railings Repairs. Mr. Messis?
Mayor and Commission, sealed bids were solicited for the above referenced project, received and opened publicly on September 5th, 2024 at 2:00 PM. One sealed bid was received from Desert Fawn Limited Liability Company for $54,400 plus $5,500 bid alternate excluding New Mexico GRT. The work associated with the base bid will mainly consist of crack repair, scraping and repainting the majority of the building's exterior. The bid alternate includes repairs to three separate sections of railing on the south and west side of the building. This is the third time we have put out an invitation for sealed bids on this project in the past three years and the first bid we have received. Based upon the pricing above, we are recommending award of contract to Desert Fawn Limited Liability Corporation in the amount of $59,900 plus New Mexico GRT for a total contract amount of $64,846.72. The funding of this project will come out of the $175,000 budgeted in FY25 for a special revenue library building fund, line item 211 dash 00 dash 48010 for building repairs.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the bid award for the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Paint and Railings Repair, Desert Fawn LLC for the $59,900 plus NMGRT.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the award. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on State of New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department statewide emergency funding, intergovernmental grant agreement for a commercial oven for the Raton Senior Citizens Center. Mr. Messis?
Mayor and Commission, the State of New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department, uh, statewide emergency funding has provided an intergovernmental grant agreement in the amount of $13,573.40 for the replacement of a commercial oven at the Raton Senior Center. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative in this action.
And Des, would you note that I will be abstaining from this?
Yes, sir.
Any conversation?
I will move to approve on the State of New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department statewide emergency funding, intergovernmental grant agreement for the commercial oven for the Raton Senior Center. Second.
And just a little clarification, it's not just a basic commercial oven. It's the, their convection ovens and they've been without there now for about two months?
Did we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, Don. Opposed? Sure enough, motion passes. Item J, deliberate and act on memorandum of agreement between the City of Raton and the New Mexico State Game Commission by and through the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish regarding the purchase of Bartlett Mesa, Colfax County, New Mexico. Mr. Messis?
Mayor and Commission, the city intended to bring forward the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Game and Fish and the City of Raton for the purchase of land on Bartlett Mesa in Colfax County. We recently discovered a technical omission and recommend that we postpone this deliberation and action until our next meeting.
All right. Motion to postpone?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone till our September 24th meeting? Correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Resolution 202451, declaring surplus property and approving transfer of property to North Central New Mexico Economic Development District for the restoring of our communities' programs. And again, Desiree, I will abstain from any conversation in this as I am employed by North Central. Comments, questions?
I'm on the board. I think this is a really good project, good program. I know that Colfax County is supporting it, um, with some funding. And I think this, you know, get a project under our belt tonight, maybe we can get a few more going in the community.
Do you want my notes?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, the New Mexico Mortgage and Finance Authority recently launched its Restoring Our Communities program to meet New Mexico's affordable housing units while assisting communities in reducing vacant and abandoned houses. North Central Economic Development District is the approved service provider for this program specific to. program specific to Colfax County. Colfax County has already appropriated $100,000 for this program, and the City of Raton wishes to donate a vacant house and property located at 904 Sugar Reed Avenue. This property was transferred to the City of Raton by the previous owners to terminate liability. The donation of this property to North Central New Mexico Economic Development District would eliminate the need for the city to demolish at taxpayers' expense and reduce the number of vacant homes. The city recommends that you act in affirmative on this resolution.
And I know we have Mr. Berry here, he's the project lead on this. Scott, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I'm Scott Berry. I am the program coordinator in Colfax County for the Restoring Our Communities program, the ROCK program. My entity, little entity, is Iridium Project Services, and we contract to North Central for the implementation of the program. It's a relatively new program. We started this in June, and the vision of this program, as described in Mortgage Finance Authority's documentation, is, number one, to address the number of vacant homes that are not only in Raton, and we have a lot of vacant properties in Raton, homes and commercial businesses, but also throughout Colfax County. So we are taking similar steps in Springer, in Maxwell, in Cimarron, and throughout the county. It is a relatively new program, and, and the second objective of the program is to provide housing for affordable workforce in that, in that range that's, that would be affordable, that we have very limited supply of in, in these communities. So, for example, if you bring an employer to Raton and they recruit workforce, you know, housing becomes an issue with that development. We hear that a lot. Where are you going to get the workforce from? And, and if you identify workforce, can you afford to live in the community? And, and so we're trying to address both of those issues with this program. It's a, an innovative program, and I got involved in this, like I say, back in June, and we're really trying to get the program stood up. We're also trying to make this a sustainable program. And how the program works, we look to acquire vacant houses. They must be vacant and is single-family housing in these communities. We will then hire contractors, which are pre-qualified with North Central, to do the renovations of the homes. Now, we're not talking about, you know, putting some paint on it and flipping the house. We're talking about a complete renovation to make the house completely code-compliant. So, as you can imagine, that's generally electrical, plumbing, HVAC renovations, but it includes everything down to new kitchen appliances. These are, this, what we envision would be a ready-to-go home. And then seek to resell that home to a qualified buyer. That would be a buyer that has a limited ability to, to acquire a house, really middle-income to lower-middle-income type of person. They would have to finance that, though, and generally, we would take the acquisition cost plus the renovation, the cost of renovations, and try to recover 85% of that. So that's a 15% incentive for the buyer. So I, I think it's a good program. We're, we're, we're trying to get this going, and we're looking to acquire our, our first home in Colfax County. So really putting out a lot of effort on that, kind of putting the word out to the public here right now. I do have a brochure for you commissioners that's got some basic information in it.
You may have this. I have it. Well, I'm going to take that back. You gotta take your...
I think there's actually a copy in here.
Sounds great. I had enough for everybody when I started, and then we passed a few out in the audience getting to this point. But that's kind of a description of the program. Let's talk specifically about 904 Sugar Reed. That, that was transferred to the city because you had a situation where the house had been vacant for many years, decades. The, the owners really didn't want anything to do with the house, and, you know, that's the way it gets cleaned up. The city accepted it with the idea that it would be entered into the Brownfield program, remediated, and ultimately torn down. But in looking at the house, I believe that, under the ROCK program, we can rehabilitate this home. So it's my job to, once we locate a prospective property, to run it through a feasibility tool that is put, put together by Mortgage Finance Authority. That's basically an estimate of the cost of, of renovating the home. And in this case, we came up with something on the order of $125,000 to renovate the home. Now, if we add an acquisition cost on, on top of that, that drives up that final price. And, and sometimes it's, it's so high that, you know, it doesn't qualify as affordable housing anymore, so we have to walk away from those projects. If, if this project, if this home could be transferred to the ROCK program without an acquisition cost, ultimately, that really helps the affordability of this, this home. If it comes in at something like that $125,000 that we talked about, we would seek to recover 85% of that. And I think that that would, would meet that goal of providing affordable housing. Now, we would anticipate that you, the City of Raton, will also need to get approval through state agency, like local government division. And North Central, of course, has, they're, they're located in Santa Fe, they have the ability to, to talk to the folks at North Central and, and kind of aid in, in their, their analysis of this request. And we've written the request to demonstrate that we're not really harming taxpayers by giving away something that has value. We're actually improving the community significantly with this donation. So that's the basis of our request. I'll hold up for any, any questions that y'all might have.
Questions for Mr. Berry?
The DFA approval process, is that next on, after it would be approved by us? Looks like it's contingent upon that.
Typically, those requests would go to an analyst in local government division or DFA through Michael Ann. So Michael Ann, I don't know if you want to address the, the process of discussing this with local government division, but I think that ultimately, because this is an innovative idea, I think you would need approval of the director of local government division ultimately. And I think that's where North Central can, can help with that communication.
So certainly, I think we'll have to treat it the same as any disposition of property. So upon your approval, we would draft a letter to DFA, local government division, and we would attach, obviously, the resolution and any additional information, such as Mr. Berry's letter, the pamphlets. I mean, I would include everything for them to review, and then, yeah, we would request, I would imagine, my analyst, I would copy my analyst and potentially the, the director as well, so... And then we would wait to receive a response from them before proceeding with the transfer of the deed.
This would be an atypical request. It is an innovative program, so I think they will need some clarification on, on how, how this works. But in the end, if we get all the approval, if we get the approval of the city commission tonight, and ultimately approval from local government division, what we'd anticipate is transfer of title to North Central New Mexico Economic Development Department. I, I would say it's not a government-to-government transfer because they are a not-for-profit. They're council of governments for our area and other counties in northeast, but not a state agency.
You can do a government-to-government transfer with North Central.
If that's possible, and that's just me talking, then, then that might be, that might be an easier path.
I'm not supposed to stay out of this, but I believe you can, because they are recognized as a quasi heaven.
So, yeah, maybe if you could send me some language, I could incorporate, incorporate that into my letter to DFA.
Give Monica a call.
Okay, I can certainly do that.
And Monica, we're talking about Monica Beto, the director of North Central. I have talked to Monica. She's, she is ready to interact at, at your request. And of course, she, you know, is very experienced in, in Santa Fe and, and pretty effective, I would say.
And she's spent considerable time with mortgage finance.
Right, right.
So, correct me on this, I'm drawing an assumption here. The city had no cost in this. It was gifted at the time the city acquired it.
In acquisition, the city had no cost. There was a, a deed that was drafted, and I think it's been submitted. The deed, recording of the deed is sensitive because of the requirements of Brownfield program. Now, there has been some cost in environmental investigation on the property that found some construction material containing asbestos. So there, I don't know what that cost is, but there is a, a report out there, and there would be some remediation necessary with this home.
So to that point, Michael Ann, I think I'd emphasize in your correspondence that technically, to the city, it has a negative value. We'd bear the expense of the demolition and the cleanup and abatement and so forth.
I think we tried to convey that kind of within the resolution, you know, something similar to that, so...
So would we need to include something about the potential for government-to-government transfer in the resolution, or is that something we could amend in or in the letter? What would be the best way forward if we...
I think we'll detail it out in the letter and then attach a copy of the approved resolution. If I'm going to use the quasi-judicial term, but I'll talk to Monica about that.
So I'm pretty sure we just did a deal with somebody else.
Now, in the end, we'd like to have a sustainable ROCK program in Colfax County and, and do this for many vacant homes, year after year after year. That's, that's the goal. Thank you all.
Any other questions, comments?
I will move to approve Resolution 2024-51, declaring surplus property and approving transfer of property to North Central, North New Mexico Economic Development District for the restoring of our communities' program.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will be abstaining. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, City Treasury Report. I will yield my time to the Chief of Staff, Ms. Assistant Chief.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening, we do bring to you the budget approval letter from local government division. This is for the FY25 budget. We also do have a copy of the letter that the Raton Public Service has received. I did confirm with Raton Water Works in the computer system, it's showing is approved, but they haven't received the official letter from DFA yet, so we are awaiting Raton Water Works' letter. You'll see within the letter that it is a requirement that the approved budget be made part of the minutes of the governing body, so this is strictly just a report to you this evening, and there is no action. And then in the final paragraph, you'll see that, once the budget is approved, all budget increases and transfers between funds would require budget adjustments moving forward. Is there any questions?
Questions for Michael Ann. There is no action needed on this, so... Any other? Thank you. Good job.
It was a relief once it's approved.
Yes. This is one of the letters I look forward to getting. All right. Item N, deliberate and act on Resolution 24-52, budget adjustment number one, fiscal year 25. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, I think this is an annual tradition. We bring a report to you that we've approved the budget, and the very next item on the agenda is our first budget adjustment. So, you know, we're a couple months already into the fiscal year. The commission has taken various actions since the final budget was approved, so you'll see within this budget adjustment, we've incorporated various grants that we've been awarded, such as the Broadband Access and Expansion Grant, that was $100,000. The Elevator Grant, which you took some action on this evening with TKE Elevator, that grant is $121,718.02. We also received the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant for $7,650. And then within the, the general fund, we do have a, a few line items that we need to make some adjustments to. I am taking some of those funds out of that abatement line item. When we did receive the residual payments from water and RPS, we kind of put some of those funds in that particular line item. We are pretty confident this year that most of the abatement expense would be covered through the Brownfields program, and also the NMED has some funds that we're going to try to tap into. You'll recall earlier this year, as part of our budget approval process, we did have a reversion of some LEPF funds, so we did come up a little bit short on the outfitting of the three new police vehicles, so we would need to transfer $12,536 out of the general fund to the LEPF to complete the outfitting of those three vehicles. We also, at the last commission meeting, did approve the purchase of the fire equipment, so I've included that as a transfer of funds, just out of the vehicles, into the equipment line item. The other adjustments, we did get awarded the Fire Recruitment Grant in the amount of $225,000. So that is a new fund that I had to set up within the, the budget, so you'll see the, the new line items detailed there. Stand for any questions?
Questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-52, budget adjustment number one, fiscal year 25.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-52. Should that be 2024-52? I believe it should be 2024.
Oh, yes.
Sorry about that.
That's right.
2024-52.
So would you freely amend it?
Yes, I think it's correct on the, on the agenda, it's just incorrect on the form. I think I said it.
Yeah.
I think on the resolution page at the top.
Yeah.
I think she said it.
She, okay, she said it right, but we, we still need to correct the form.
So amend.
Make sure that...
Over印印that for your signature.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-52. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item N, City Manager Report, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, bottom line up front, the most significant accomplishment in the past two weeks, you all were part of, and it was our planning session. While the session brought up a lot of issues, it provided a rare opportunity to look at the big picture of Raton's challenges and opportunities. I can say that from a city perspective, it provided a sense of understanding and direction. The big rocks, the treasurer, the chief of staff presented the budget tonight and will quickly shift our efforts to the audits, which much of the data is due by the end of this month. With the police department, the law enforcement annual training is being scheduled for later this month for our force. With the fire department, I got to participate with the fire department on Friday, where they did a community outreach with students over at the elementary school. These outreach events are vital to educating our youth, and it was a lot of fun participating. In public works, we met with Bonham Houston on the Clayton Interchange 30% Design. Engineering, the city engineer secured a Department of Energy Sparkling Communities Grant. The grant we have been selected for is $2 million to complete a 1 megawatt solar array for Raton Public Service. We are only one of 12 awardees across the country. Facilities, the aquatic center is having three pumps repaired off-site and should be able to function on the remaining two. With the clerk, the clerk is working on the new website, and we are exploring ways to accelerate the implementation. Economic development, a reminder... Economic Development, a reminder that the Economic Development Summit on October 16th from 9:00 to 5:00 PM, citizens can learn about upcoming opportunities in capital outlay, congressional directed funding, and grant availability, and we can engage with speakers and explore strategies for economic housing and workforce growth in our region. The following day on October 17th, from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM, we invite representatives of municipal and regional governments in northern New Mexico and southern Colorado to join us for collaborating on regional issues. Together, we will explore ways to advance all of our communities and meet the needs of our citizens. In mentions to dispatches, I'd like to give a shout out to Lance Martinez, Michael Martinez, Larry Marcus, and Carson Trujillo for their work all day long in the Fragrant Tunnel, trying to figure out everything that's going on that needs to be fixed there. And finally, closing thoughts. Tomorrow marks the 23rd anniversary of the September 11th attacks. When the first plane struck the North Tower at 8:46 AM in New York City, I was still asleep at my residence in Troutdale, Oregon, some 2,400 miles away, where the time was 5:46 in the morning. When I woke up at 6:00 AM, I knew all too soon that the world had changed. 2,977 innocent people were murdered that day. It is the deadliest terrorist attack in human history. There were also a lot of public servants who perished that day. On September 11th, 2001, 343 New York firefighters were killed, many as they rushed into burning, collapsing skyscrapers to try and save lives. You will see this number on the back of our fire trucks here in Raton, New Mexico, keep back 343 feet, and here's a couple pictures of, you know, our fire trucks that honored those New York firefighters. In New York City, there were also 71 law enforcement officers, including 23 members of the New York City Police Department, 37 members of the Port Authority Police Department, four members of the State Office of Tax Enforcement, three officers of New York State Office of Court Administration, one member of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, one member of the United States Secret Service, and including canines of Port Authority bomb sniffing dogs. At the Pentagon, there were 125 deaths, 55 were members of the United States Armed Forces, 33 Navy sailors, and 22 Army soldiers. The other 70 were civilians, 47 Army employees, six Army contractors, six Navy employees, three Navy contractors, seven from my previous employer at the Defense Intelligence Agency, and one contractor at the Office of the Secretary of Defense. An officer of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service died aboard United Airlines Flight 93, but the biggest story of Flight 93 was that it was the greatest act of a militia since the Minutemen of Lexington and Concord. The passengers on that Flight 93, having knowledge of the World Trade Center attacks, formed a militia to fight back and protect the lives of unknown unintended targets of the monsters that were hijacking the plane. There are a lot of lessons from that day, but maybe the simplest lesson is to be brave, be kind, and we all should stick together. That's what I have.
All right, concludes the business part of our meeting. Is there any other comments, Mr. Honeyfield?
No.
Let's just start.
I do want to say thank you to all of our first responders, giving up tomorrow's commemorations, and we are fortunate to have some brave men and women in our community who stand at the ready to rush in when others have to rush out.
Absolutely, appreciate them all. Seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned.